Everyone, it's 9:06 and I'm going to call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. We have seven members present. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The commission may request for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for presentation and public comment. Otherwise, the consent agenda will be considered in one vote. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by staff with no opposition received to date. Since some items on the consent agenda may require a public hearing, the commission will accept public comment on any item on the consent agenda in one public hearing. So first, does anyone wish to pull any items off of the consent agenda? Okay, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on the consent agenda items? We have, it looks like, four items. The minutes, a replat in the gateway addition, the final plat for North Meridian section, and a preliminary plat and final plat for Odell Estates. Anyone wish to speak on those? Okay, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seven zero. Regular agenda subdivision plats. The Planning Commission has final authority for approval. Appeals may be directed to the City Council. Item one, RP 23-33, request for replat of Angelo Heights Edition Block 178, creating seven, eight, and nine, excuse me, being lots seven, eight, and nine, having two-family RS2 zoning, a variance request to maintain the established right-of-way at 49 feet instead of 52 for a minor collector on North Van Buren, and a paving variance to maintain 30 feet of paving with curb and gutter instead of the minimum 36. Mr. Benoy.
Good morning, Planning Commission. Here in Benoy, Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. Yes, this is the first replat of Angelo Heights in Block 178. You see here on the image on the right, you see we are creating lots 7A and 8A. Currently, that's an old plat that has three lots that kind of come forward through there, three and a, or two and a half lots, and we're really creating two lots, one with the existing structure and then lot 8A. This is RS2 zoning, which allows single-family detached and single-family attached, meaning duplexes as well. The intent by the developer is actually another single-family home here. This is in District 5, Karen Harris Smith, and in the central neighborhood. So as you see there, it's very hard to see because our plats are hard to get a zoom in to them, but this plat has gone before the zoning board of adjustment. Lot 8A is a double frontage lot, as it does not have an alleyway behind it, and so the applicant came forward and requested a variance of 10 feet per front yard setback, front yard setback on West Harris and front yard setback on North Van Buren. They did receive a 10-foot variance, and so they both have 15-foot setbacks for front yards. As I move to the next screen, you can see the property there on Harris is already very close, and the 15-foot aligns pretty well with those properties going north on Van Buren, so we do feel very comfortable that it's not causing any site issues. So let's talk about the variances on here. You see Harris that comes across. It's actually a very large local street, and then Van Buren is a north-south minor collector. And right now, its right-of-way is pretty standard, all the way from Sherwood Way up to Houston Hart. Then north of Houston Hart, it's a little larger. So we think this section of Van Buren is actually functioning correctly for right-of-way. If you also kind of look on the west side there, it's very difficult to see in our image, but the right-of-way on the west side is much larger already. And so if we were to improve that street at any point in the future through a CIP project, we probably would take some of the right-of-way on the western side to add paving to before we added to the eastern side. So that is the main reasons why we are in support of the two variances, to keep the right-of-way at the 49 feet and the paving width at the 30 feet. So staff does recommend approval of the first replat of Angelo Heights Block 178 and approval of the two variances for the right-of-way width and paving width, and subject to those five conditions.
All right. Anyone have questions for the staff? All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this case, please come forward. State your name and address or single-member district.
Good morning. I'm Jack Downey with SKG Engineering. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer those for you.
Good morning, Jack. Anyone have questions for Jack? Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented by the staff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seven zero. Item two, RP 23-34, first replat of lots 44 and 45 in Block 3, Section 2, group Red Bluff of the Lake Nazworthy addition with single-family residential RS1 zoning. A variance request has been made for no additional paving. Mr. Benoy.
Good morning again. This is the Lake Nazworthy addition. There are two lots out here off of Red Bluff Circle, Lot 44 and 45, and they are combining them into one single lot. It is RS1 zoning, District 1, Mr. Tommy Hebert in the Nazworthy neighborhood. So on here, you can see the lots here. The lake is here to the right. There's a fairly large access easement, like in a lot of situations out there, and then here you can kind of see this is where the roadway is. And then this property here is also owned by the city of San Angelo. And so when we talk about the variance, went the wrong way, apologize, the variance, you can now see that that Red Bluff Road, while it's not widely paved, it's only 15-foot to 17-foot. We did talk to our emergency services group. It is a small area that loops out to a little bit larger road of Red Bluff that comes out of there, and thinking about emergency access in and getting folks out, the road is functioning now. We are combining lots, and so we're not adding more traffic to this road, and so it does make sense at this time to support that variance. If there's a movement sometime in the future that the city says, well, we need to make some roads out there a little wider, we do have plenty of space to make roads wider at that time through a CIP project if necessary. So at this time, we do support that variance. We don't see any reason why they would need to pave just an incremental half. Right now, emergency services is satisfied with that width, as well as our engineering services group and operations. So the only conditions, and I have a typo there I see that says five conditions. It should only be two conditions. It's a tax certificate and then approving the variance width.
Okay. Anyone have questions for the staff? All right, we're going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this case, please state your name and address or single-member district.
All right. Good morning, everybody. My name is Blake with Wield Engineering. We just request approval as presented, and if anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
All right. Thank you, Blake. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seven zero. All right, item B, conditional uses. The Planning Commission has final authority for approval of conditional uses. Appeals may be directed to the City Council. Item one, CU 22-21, a request for renewal of a conditional use for a short-term rental at 2517 Junius Street.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sherry Bailey, Principal Planners. This is the first renewal request for the property at 2517 Junius. It is RS1 zoning. It is in District 2, Tom Thompson's district, and it is Angelo Heights neighborhood. And yes, on the original, there was another neighborhood that was, I believe it was Glenmore that was listed, but it is Angelo Heights. The applicant had a late start. Once they were approved, they were caught in the middle of inspections and having some changes that they had to do, so they have only been open for a very short time. So this renewal is just at the beginning of their actually operating as a short-term rental, and so we are making a recommendation at the end of this that I'll go over with you. In this area in Angelo Heights, there are three other short-term rentals, and then the gold star represents this applicant. All the others have been operating. We sent out 19 notices. We received zero in favor and zero opposed on this particular piece of property. And staff is recommending approval of the short-term rental renewal with two conditions and a suggestion to Planning Commission. The conditions are maintain the two paved-up street parking spots that are on the premises and two to obtain and comply with an annual fire inspection from the Fire Marshal's office. We are also recommending that they receive only a one-year renewal, since they've been operating for such a short time, and we'd like to have a chance to evaluate their operation. Normally, the renewal would be a two-year, but we believe Planning Commission can make change in it and adjust the one year. And as I said, the operator has been operating only for a very short period of time, so we haven't gotten a copy of their first submittal. They've only had one submittal for tax, hot tax. And are there any questions?
Anyone have questions for Sherry? Okay, the only question I have, you've indicated they've operated for a short time. How long is short? A month, two months, six months?
Probably three, maybe four, just to get their feet wet.
Okay.
Very short time.
Okay.
I believe.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case, please come forward. Excuse me.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm the owner at that property, and I've actually been...
Could you state your name for us, please?
Andrea Salazar.
Okay.
And it's actually been, we had a late start, but we started in March, so that's...
Nine months.
Yes.
Eight months.
Right.
Okay.
And the only reason for the late start was just because of still getting it furnished and getting it ready.
Okay.
And I was just going to want to ask if I could get the two-year, with the exception of turning in that tax at the end of the year.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case? I do have, I'm sorry, if you don't mind coming back up, I do have a question. You indicated that you had started operating in March.
Right.
How many times do you think you've rented out your short-term rental in that time period?
I have a printout of my calendar bookings. It doesn't have...
Is it 30 nights, 20, 50?
Can I give this to you?
Sure.
It has the darker days of trauma in the book.
Okay. It looks like you've had a lot of activity.
Right.
Especially July, August, September.
Correct.
It looks like it's been occupied more than it's been vacant.
Correct.
Okay.
We haven't gotten any police reports, right?
I don't think so. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment. Sherry, I think the, I think you've addressed this, but could you kind of just discuss the process for these renewals with police reports and code compliance, et cetera?
Absolutely. We contact the police department, and we've now, or at least I've now started asking for her to do a more comprehensive look to see if there have been any complaints or call-outs, which are actually two different things.
Okay.
And we also contact upstairs code enforcement. We also usually, when I go out to take pictures or go out to look at the property, if there happens to be somebody outside or somebody in the neighborhood or a neighbor, I'll knock on the door and ask if they've had any complaints, and nobody has.
Okay, thank you.
The one thing that I would like to say is...
Yes, ma'am.
There was a delay in getting the CO, which is what we use as the point for...
Okay.
Actually operating.
And do you know when they obtained the CO?
When I looked in the files, it looked like it was late in July or August that they'd finished. They were going through, making some changes, and they had gone through the inspections, and they were making some...
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
So does that mean that the beginning of the time period from the spreadsheet that we were provided, were they illegally operating then technically, since they didn't have the CO?
Technically, I don't want to make that call. How about that?
Okay.
Because I know they were working on it, and I know they'd had the inspections and everything, and were trying to comply with it.
Okay. All right.
All right. Anyone else have questions for the staff or wish to make a motion?
Can't we change that one year? That renewal? Yeah, but I mean, do we have that ability to change?
I think we do.
It's conditional.
Yeah, it's conditional.
Not that I'm over that. I was just curious if that was possible.
My concern, though, is that, you know, we do have that one year, but whenever we approve it, there is a certain timeframe the applicant is going to have to take to make these changes, and I think that that needs to be addressed in the short-term rentals because...
Yeah.
If, you know, we say you've got to have these X amount of items, and it takes them six months, it's really, you know, on both sides to get it there, but...
And we've come across that quite a bit.
I mean, because we're hearing more and more late start.
Yeah.
And it's because...
Of the stuff they have to do.
Of the stuff they have to do. So I would rather not punish these individuals because of that, but I would like to say, you know, as we're looking at the short-term rentals, is come back and say the first one is a one-year if they've only been operating for, and I'll make up a number, six months.
Yeah.
And if it's greater than six months they've been operating, then they get the two years, but take some of that grayness away.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay, on that note, would anyone like to make a motion on this case?
Make a motion to approve.
With or without the one-year...
Removing the one-year.
So a two-year renewal. All right.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second to renew for two years. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seven zero.
Travis, how do we, what's the steps to go back? I know, I know we're looking at the short-term rentals.
Yes, sir.
Is now the time that, you know, we ask for them to take a look at something like that?
I think, I think it makes sense to get to the ordinance and discuss. I think there's some pretty broad changes that the staff's introducing for us to consider.
And that would be the time?
And I think we, I think we take it up then, if that's all right with you.
Okay.
Okay. All right, the next case is CU 2350. It's a request for a renewal of a conditional use for a short-term rental located at 2183 Gun Club Road.
Good morning. Ray Limeberry, Planner. And this is a renewal. They have been operating since 2017, so they are coming back. They're, they actually missed the renewal after 2017, so they did it in 2017, 2020, 2021, and now they're coming back after two years for their, their next renewal. It is RS1 zoning, District 1, Tommy Hebert in the Nazworthy neighborhood. There are six active ones. There are a few more stars than that because there are some denied and expired ones. The yellow star right there is where we're looking at. And if you see, most of the green active ones are kind of spread out besides the bottom We mailed out 10 notices. We received zero in favor, zero opposed. And we are recommending approval as long as they maintain their parking, they maintain their certificate of occupancy, and I do believe they've already gotten their annual fire inspection.
Okay.
But that they comply with it. With that, is there any questions?
Anyone have questions for the staff on this case? All right, we're going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or a motion. The only question I have here, the timeframes, 2007, 2020, and 2021, can you speak to the gaps?
Gaps.
To the gaps, the timing?
Maybe. Okay, yes. The owner did not realize that back in 2017 that there was renewal process, so they kept operating, and they were notified that, hey, you shouldn't be, and so they came in 2020 and got another conditional use. It was treated as new, and then, so they came back in the year in 2021 and renewed, and so this is their...
The first two-year.
The first two-year one.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone want to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seven zero. Item three, CU 2351, a request for approval of a conditional use to allow retail, sales, and service use in a light manufacturing zoning district located at 999 Nickerbacher
Sherry Bailey, Principal Planner, again. This is a conditional use, as you indicated, to allow retail, sales, and service in a light manufacturing zoned area. And as you can see from the exhibit on the screen, there's a large area right along Nickerbacher Road and then going down where the railroad crosses, and then generally in that area that is light manufacturing. I think the original thought behind it was with the railroad there, that that made sense to have manufacturing. But we're, as we're well aware, that entire area is more of a commercial area, and so it is on our list to eventually come in and do some rezonings in that area. But right now, to allow them to do what has historically been done on that triangle piece, which is a lot of open retail sales and service, it's had everything from cars at one time to trailers, to a number of other kinds of open sales in that. It's in District 5, and it is in the ASU Colly Hills neighborhood. This is the general layout of what the applicant is proposing. The buildings are existing. He intends to reuse those buildings as a service area for the golf carts and lawn mowers and maybe a small trailer or two in that area. He is going to display it as is required on the setback area. However, and I'll get into this in just a moment, but we are looking at it as a heavy commercial use, and so we're wanting to hold him to the requirements under CH. We sent out seven notices. Received zero in favor and zero opposed. We do have that as indicated, the subject property that's outlined in red up there. And the, it's hard to tell, but the railroad runs right along to what would be the southwest of that property, and has, there is some overlap in the area of fences over time that have been built kind of in the railroad right-of-way, and he has, or will be requesting approval from the railroad to continue to keep his fence there. If he doesn't receive that, he will have to move the fence, and they're well aware of that. Staff is recommending approval of the conditional use, and we have three conditions of approval, except as otherwise specified or limited below. The development of the subject property shall generally conform with the general commercial, heavy commercial, particularly the heavy commercial zoning district development standards. Even though it is in ML, they're going to be held to the setback requirements for CH. All lighting, if provided, shall be fully shielded so as not to create any spill over in the area, and the applicant shall obtain all required permits, including the change of occupancy from permits and inspections within the next 12 months of approval. Are there any questions from the Planning Commission?
Sherry, I have a couple.
Okay. Let me go back.
You talked about the setback requirements of heavy commercial.
Mm-hmm.
Can you tell me what the setback requirement would be on the Nickerbacher frontage?
On the Nickerbacher frontage would actually be 25 feet.
25 feet.
From the property line, yes.
Okay.
Now, the, let's be honest, the buildings are existing in that setback area.
It looks like the building's maybe not 25 feet.
They are not 25 feet.
Okay.
And so they get, but the rest of the displayer and everything will be setback in that area.
So they'd be allowed to work with the existing improvements that are on the site?
Yes.
But you're going to try to get 25 feet of setback on the Nickerbacher Road frontage?
Right.
Okay. All right, anyone else have questions? Thank you, Sherry.
You bet.
I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this case, please come forward. State your name and address or single-member district.
Hi, I'm Kaylee Ward. The reason the building is not 25-foot is it was built there before the road on Nickerbacher was even widened. So we actually have the, I think it's the original, can you maybe remind me what this is? Survey.
Survey, yeah.
Yes, and I can show it to you, too, and it shows where, so this was where the road was, and it was 25-foot, and now that's where it is.
Okay.
So it took away that 25-foot, but that's why we're asking that we still use that building. When we bought it beginning of this year, they had had, they were selling hot tubs and everything and went through everything and got everything approved, so just asking that we're able to sell golf carts, pretty much.
Okay.
And I can answer.
So you're servicing them there, too, right? Or, because you have another location up on the north side of town, correct?
Yes, ma'am. And we're going to prob, more or less, we're going to be servicing them more at our shop on Broadnaxx, or if you've seen the 99, or, sorry, 705 location, it actually has a built shop there. So we're going to actually do most of the servicing there.
So it's really just retail stuff?
It's really just going to be selling the golf carts and by trailers. I mean, we may have one trailer there that's the size for a golf cart to go on.
Because you're, you're moving from your existing location on South Bryant to that, correct?
Yes, so we have a South Bryant location and a North Bryant location, and we're hoping to move all the golf carts to this location, so it's mostly going to be, well, golf carts and then a couple of mowers.
Okay.
Okay.
So question to the staff, then, is on their existing location on the South Bryant one, what is the zoning on that? And if they're... And if they're just doing sales and not servicing, why are we having to use CH?
Let me answer the one that I absolutely know the answer to, okay? Because I don't know what the zoning is on South Bryant. I could guess, but I, I don't want to do that. In ML, retail sales and service is not allowed use. So they have to go for a conditional use because of that.
Okay, thank you.
So to clarify why we're doing a conditional use, and we are not rezoning this property, it is a conditional use. There was a change of occupancy-
Right.
-that came forward. So that's what triggered us to review what's, what's happening there. The business in the past did not do that. This one did. Again, just like she reiterated, they're not touching the building, and the building gets to be kind of, if you will, grandfathered in. And so if they touch the building in a significant way, we would look at that 25-foot setback. But at this time, under that conditional use, we would not look at that. It would be kind of grandfathered in.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kaylee.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or emotion. I'm very familiar with this area, and it's a, it's a high-traffic, good location. There's, there's some other kind of industrial-type use that's, I guess, south of this location. But as you continue north on Nickherbacher, it becomes very commercial. So I think it's a, I think it's a good use for this area. The only, the only concern I might have is with outside storage. Is there a limit on the amount of outside storage with the zoning that's proposed?
There is not.
Okay.
That's the other reason we want with heavy commercial.
Yeah.
They would have to maintain adequate parking, and we'll be working with them on that.
Right.
Being a retail sales and not being a very large building, that's probably two to three parking spaces.
Yeah.
One of those being ADA. So there's going to be some open space, obviously, with parking for people coming to buy things.
Yes.
I think it's pretty limited on that, just because of the size of the lot.
Yes.
It is, a tight lot.
But at the same point in time, you've got to think about, you know, it's not like there's a giant rush to buy a golf cart. There's not going to be 20 people buying golf carts at the same time, you know? So, unless there's some miraculous sale, which if there is, let us know. All right. And the applicant's fine with the zoning and the setback?
The, the only thing that I would consider, maybe change-wise, is I, I'm comfortable with the, the amount of outside storage. Because it's such a high-traffic, commercial corridor, it would be great if there was a little bit of a buffer, of a fence or something that kind of softened it so that we don't have a bunch of golf carts parked right up on the street, right there. But I'm going to leave that to you guys.
At the same point in time, their current location wasn't required to have-
To answer your question.
I'm going to open up public comments for Kaylee. Yes, come on in.
To answer your question, because you brought up the fence, there is a fence, actually, behind the building.
Okay.
And like what she was talking about where the old fence was, the previous owner actually came to the city, asked if they could do a new fence, and he was just told, as long as it's not taller, anything like that, is it going to be anywhere different? No. So there is a fence back there that we would essentially have everything locked up.
Okay. Great, thank you. All right. Anyone else have thoughts or wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Seven, zero. All right. CU 2352, a request for conditional use to allow a cell tower in the general commercial zoning district located at 2849 East Houston Art.
Good morning, Rayline Berry again. And this one is a vacant property that a Verizon has leased a portion of it to put a cell tower. It is usually not allowed in CG. It has to be in light manufacturing. So this is a conditional use to allow it in general commercial. So it is CG zoning, District 4, Lucy Gonzalez, and it's the Paul Ann neighborhood. This is their site plan that they have turned in. If you notice, it is, I don't want to say right off the street, but it is a little closer to the street. So I'm going to go back a picture. It is going in about right here. So you'll have all this space back here between them and the residential.
Okay.
We did mail out 10 notices. We received one in favor. The gentleman next door said that if they want to put two towers up, he's willing to allow them on his property. So our staff is recommending approval with four conditions, that they are subject to the commercial zoning standards other than allowing the cell tower. They are also supposed to conform to Section 426, which is the telecommunication facilities, which so far they, everything they've turned in has complied with that. All lighting shall be fully shielded, and that the applicant shall obtain all required permits. With that, is there any questions?
Anyone have questions for the staff? Thank you, Ray. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Charles Becker, 20784, private road, 1775, Paint Rock. Is there going to be any guide wires on this tower, or is it freestanding?
I can answer that. The applicant is here and can address that.
There's a-
I'm Ariel Stouter. I'm with Holleton Engineering on behalf of Verizon Wireless. No, it is not a guide tower. It's what we call a self-support tower. And what that is designed to do is it'll collapse on itself, so there's going to be-
Okay, hold on, I'm sorry. We're having a hard time hearing you. Do you mind letting her address us publicly, and then you can come back and ask questions? Okay.
Any questions you have?
All right, my apologies. So this tower is what we call a self-support tower. There's going to be no guide wires. What this self-support tower will do is it is designed to collapse upon itself. It's not like the guide wires that you're thinking of where they have the connecting wires.
Right.
And it's not one of the monopoles, which is a straight pole.
Okay.
Yeah.
How tall is the, is the tower?
It is proposed for 190 feet.
Okay. 190 feet.
Any more questions that I can help?
I don't understand y'all's mouth. Is a green deal there for a buffer zone? What, what is that?
I think that's you, Ray. So we notify within 200 feet. So that green buffer is 200 feet around the property.
So you can't bill within, is that buffer zone?
No, you can. It's just a guide to let us know who to notify, that we have to notify any property that touches that line, or that is within that line. So we just have to notify that something is going in. That's all that is. It's just for us.
I'd be on Houston Hart and Garden. So y'all going to have a curb cut there that's to go in now with this tower? Houston Hart?
What's the access for the tower going to be like on Houston Hart? Can you go back to the, to the site plan?
I think the answer is, is yes. They anticipate getting through TexDOT to get that curb access from there, but that is a TexDOT road, and so they have the jurisdiction of that, and that's their anticipation.
And we will be applying for all appropriate permits and getting approval for that.
If y'all want to just tell whose land it is, I wouldn't have to be here. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Ariel Stouter.
Ariel, okay.
Yes.
Does anyone else have questions for Ariel? Thank you, Ariel.
Hey, you're welcome, thank you for having me.
All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment. I under, so you were saying that this is normally in manufacturing zoning, and this is general commercial? What's the zoning for this lot?
Correct, it is CG. It's the zoning, and it, most cell towers, telecommunication towers have to be in light manufacturing.
Okay.
Unless they have a conditional use.
So the only concern I have about, about this, this proposed use is the location of the tower itself. If you put it up on the frontage, it, obviously, there's not a lot of development that's going on out there today, but at some point in the future, I would expect that we're going to see some development along the, the commercial frontage. A cell tower obviously doesn't contribute a lot in terms of traffic, and it, and it can detract from the visibility in frontage on one of these thoroughfares like, like this frontage road. So the only thing I would consider or suggest that, that we, that we talk about is moving the, the tower back on the lots, so that it doesn't impact the, the frontage, the commercial frontage of the, looks like Expressway Frontage Road, Houston Hart, Expressway Frontage Road. How close is it to the frontage road right now?
See if I can read that.
That may be an Ariel question.
Yeah, as I say, that may be an Ariel question.
We don't have an exact distance on this map.
But I will say, they cannot go too much further back, simply because there is, in that telecommunication, Section 426, there is a line that says they cannot be within, I think it's 100 feet of residential.
Right.
So-
Well, and I, if, if you had 200 feet of frontage, enough to get a building or parking at least in front of the cell tower, if this is set right up on the, on the frontage road, obviously, it's convenient access for, for the service of the tower. I just think, long-term, it might impact the, the ultimate, highest and best use of that, of that land with the frontage road right there.
And it may also be that's something they have to work out with the owner.
Right.
Also.
Okay.
I'm not sure if that's where the owner-
Ariel, can you, do you know what the setback is from the, from the highway, frontage
I'd say it looks to be 20 to 25 feet.
Okay. So it's pretty close.
And working with Verizon and GT, this is pretty common. What they do is even in, you know, in the big cities trophy club and the main thoroughfares-
Yeah.
They normally put them there because of the limitations of the cable, and then they're trying to adjust to a certain land area. And by moving it back, it did create issues for us because of the, the cabling, the power, the access, and everything else. So I understand why they're doing it, but to the points that you're making, aesthetically, is it the best place? But from a physical standpoint, and from the old job, that is the right place to be because of all of the other issues, power, everything else associated with it. We, we lost many a cases where, or we won a lot of cases where we did this in areas where the neighborhoods really didn't want them, but it makes good practical sense.
Sure.
Especially off the roadway, because what they're probably trying to do is pick up the traffic.
Okay.
And it does say, Chairman Stribling, in our Section 426, that they must be a minimum of 50 feet back from a right-of-way.
Okay.
So, and that's something we will work with them as the site plan comes forward.
Yep.
Today, we're just seeing, is this an appropriate use in that location?
And I don't object to the use in this area. There's a need, it's, it's pretty rural already. I'm, I'm just thinking a little bit long-term.
Yes, sir.
And the ultimate, the ultimate use of that property. Okay, thank you, Ariel.
And my thinking is if our ordinance says 50 feet-
I'm going to close public comment, by the way.
There is the opportunity for another structure to be built in front of that at some point if they chose to.
Potentially, yes, okay. All right, anyone else have thoughts or wish to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Seven, zero. Rezonings and comprehensive plan amendments, the City Council has final authority. For approval of rezonings and amendments to the comprehensive plan, item 1, Z2315, a request for a zone change from heavy commercial to light manufacturing at 1182 East Gas Plant Road.
This is a existing structure on an existing lot that's out on Gas Plant. Their zoning out there is heavy commercial. They came in for what we call a DRC or a Development Review, talking about they had just recently gotten a new contract. They would be doing a, a large amount of liquid storage in large vats out there. It was not a combustible explosive or corrosive liquid, but they were having a large volume of it, and it was a new contract, and they were hoping that it was going to grow. Looking at our ordinance and examining what, because the line is very thin between light manufacturing and heavy commercial. It really belonged in the light manufacturing zoning, but it could, it was on the border as far as heavy commercial. But looking to the future and the fact that they want to grow in that area, and we certainly want to support that, we talked to the manager out on the site who came in, and we said we really would like to have this rezoned to light manufacturing, so it won't be a problem for you in the future, and you could just move forward. And he talked to their home office, and they said, yes, let's do that. And so he did submit an application and is coming forward with that. This shows the vision plan, and the vision plan out there is transitional, so we didn't have any problem with him continuing until they got the rezoning. So we didn't stop their process or their progress at all, but just letting them go through to change it. So in looking at the appropriateness out there, that whole area is, half of it is light manufacturing, the other, the northern part is heavy manufacturing, and then where they're at is heavy commercial. So we believe it is consistent with the zoning ordinance. What they are proposing to go to is compatible with the surrounding areas. It's an opportunity for the business to grow, and we want to support that and help them grow in the future. So staff concurs that there is a need for the services in this area of the state, and they are striving to provide that, and this contributes to the orderly pattern of development in the area. We sent out 12 notices. We received zero in favor. We did have one that was opposed, and that opposition is actually out, oh, I didn't, that one didn't even belong. And it was, let me, let me go back to that, because I didn't remember an opposition. That's why I went, oh. No, that's from a rezoning from the commercial-
Which would be a different case.
Right, before, yeah. So staff is recommending approval of this to light manufacturing, and I apologize for that.
Okay, so just to clarify, Sherry, there is no opposition?
There is no opposition.
Okay.
No, they got total, total support from that when we talked to people. They, we had some questions because they wanted to know what was going on, and they said, oh, yeah, yeah, we don't have a problem with that at all. They're good neighbors.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for the staff? All right, thank you, Sherry. We're going to open it up for public comment.
Good morning, Michael Looney. I'm the VP of Economic Development for the San Angelo Chamber of Commerce. Just wanted to thank you all for being here and for listening to the presentation about the modest but important change at this property. This is Allen's Transport. Allen's Transport is a heavy haul company based out of Edmonton, Canada. We began the process of recruiting them to expand their operation from Canada into the United States in 2018. It took several years of, of very complex series of things to happen to where, worked with their company that they've got a contract with, one of many. It's a supplier out of Bryan College Station, and it all came together last year. They ended up purchasing, they were about to build a, a terminal facility in the industrial park, but at the last minute pivoted and found that this Gas Plant Road property, 1182 Gas Plant, came available. So they jumped on it, very quick close, and rapidly-
So they jumped on it, very quick close and rapidly began infilling the property to expand their operation. So this is not a relocation from their Canadian site, it's an expansion from Edmonton into the US. We spent a lot of time with them understanding their supply chain routes that run basically from the Houston Gulf Coast area to Calgary and Edmonton. It's a good spot for them. They had a lot of different options and they ultimately chose San Angelo. So we were very appreciative of their trust in the, in the community. The product that they haul is, is, they haul many different products, very well-known in Western Canada as kind of a do-it-all type hauling company. Over 100 power units and trailers in their fleet. As they expand into the US, one of their main materials that they're hauling is a very unique material. It's a drag-reducing agent that is used in interregional pipelines throughout the United States network of pipelines. And what it does is it reduces drag when, when product is input into the pipeline, generally crude oil. This product is injected at the, at the pump stations and is, and is, and it helps the product move much more efficiently with lower electricity needs to its next destination. And so they're one of the few companies in the United States that hauls this product. The company that they haul for is one of the few companies in the world that makes this product. It's a company called LSPI, it's a very, very good, well, well, well-managed profitable company based out of Brian. We are very pleased to have the opportunity to continue to expand Allen's Transport. When we ran the analysis last year, they're looking at a total of 25 new employees. This would be about an $11 million per year yield on an annualized basis of what their economic impact is to the community in, in terms of, of taxes, products, sales and, and salaries. So it's a company that's on the grow. We love them, we love working with them, we're very proud that they're here. And any questions that I might be able to answer on their behalf, I'm happy to do it. But really appreciate you all taking, taking a while to, to study this and to understand it better.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, did anyone else wish to speak on this case? I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Seven zero. All right. And now to what we've all been waiting for. Ordinance amendments. City Council has final authority for amendments to the zoning and subdivision ordinances. Item one and the only item, discussion on amendments to section 406 of the zoning ordinance regarding short-term rentals.
Good morning, Ray Lineberry. So I wanted to remind you guys, this is just a discussion, we're looking for direction. And hopefully you're happy with some of the changes we've made. So just to kind of summarize some of the changes we made, we did remove the reference to a license required instead of, instead and refer to it as a conditional use, which is exactly what it was last month. And then we reworded the expiration and renewal text that we had on there last month. We kind of thought maybe they all could renew at the same time every year. Food, does their permits, their food license in and everything that way. So we kind of think maybe this will be a better way of keeping track and, and having them all come forward at once and renewing.
Ray, I think in a, in the interest of, of getting input from everybody here, it might be easier for us to discuss each of these items.
Okay.
Potential.
Yeah.
Other opportunities or ideas as we work through it.
Okay.
There's a lot to unpack on this thing.
There is.
So the first item you noted, removal of the reference to a license required instead of refer to a required conditional use. Does everyone understand what that means and think that that makes sense? On the surface, to me, it sounds, sounds good. What, what were the issues with?
It, it was mostly the applicants expected to receive a license when they were done and, and that's not something that we did. So we were just trying to change the verbiage to match what it is that we actually do.
Okay. So is there, is there a change of occupancy associated with this conditional use?
So that's further down.
Okay.
We have actually removed the change of occupancy and have changed it to a, like an inspection required list.
Okay. And that would be from the building department and from?
Correct.
The fire marshal's office?
And the fire marshal.
Just building?
Can we talk about that a little bit more because this kind of goes back to Trinidad's point earlier about?
The time.
The, the delays that a lot of people had experienced and so.
Correct, so if you turn to, I think it's on the second page. I'm sorry? I think it's on the second page. Nope, maybe, nope, it's the third page. Right? No?
B three on the second page.
B three on the second page, so I was right on the first one. So B three. Which is not my second page, it is still my first page. B three, so yes, it is.
Item three, D, David three.
In short, those items were things that the fire marshal worked with Charlie in the inspections building to, to make a list of things that needed to be checked.
Yep.
So those would actually not be done by the fire marshal, Charlie's office would do it with the building officials.
Okay.
That seems to be a quicker, more effective way to get it done.
Sure.
And we are also recommending.
Can we get Charlie to come, just kind of, like real quick, just kind of explain how that changed the process and kind of what difference that's going to make?
And before she does that, we are also, if you read that a little bit better, we are asking them to go through that process before coming to you guys for the conditional use approval. So that way they can have that done.
Okay.
Good morning, Charlie Kemp, building official. One thing that we were running into with the fire marshal's office is they're not under the International Residential Code. They're under the International Fire Code. That's basically commercial. So they were, it, we were running into areas where they were looking at it solely as like a commercial project. And just confusion on the applications part, on the applicants part and inspectors. So we found that it was easier if we just took the lead on the projects and ran it through the residential code.
It's obviously was causing a lot of slowdown in the process of getting that.
Yeah, there was a lot of confusion between code references and, and things. But when the decision was to, let's put a change of occupancy, that means a very specific thing to our building department.
Yes.
Because a change of occupancy for residential, you're really not changing anything. You're just going from residential to residential and the residential rules apply. And so we feel very comfortable with passing once, passing this portion of this ordinance off to our building folks that see those structures day in and day out, they know what safety they need to look for. They're going to use that checklist and guidance from you guys to say, this is what's important to us for short-term rental, for someone to look at in the city. And we do think that our building department is equipped and, and able to do those things for us.
Okay.
Charlie, you made a comment that, that they would do this prior to coming to us, what, what does that mean? If I, we deny several. And so from that side of the house, what I hate for them to do is any work and then only to be denied. So what's your thought process on that? Do you give them a checklist and ask them, will you do these if approved? And then they have to do them or what's?
Well, one thing that we do look at is if it's residential and they're using it for residential, they, they're using the bedrooms as bedrooms and they're not touching that, then when that building was built, it, it met the code for that time. So we would not ask them to go in and start adding windows, removing walls, things to that effect. We're looking for fire safety issues, like your smoke detectors, that they do have ways to get out of the, out of that facility. Things to that effect. Make sure that they didn't do any kind of remodeling and didn't get permits that make, cause an issue to today. But otherwise, if it's being used for that use and they're not changing anything, we're not asking them to make any alterations to do so.
The other intent was they will, planning will still take the application, make sure it's the proper distance. If those, if it meets all those basic requirements, then they will forward it on to Charlie to make sure that they're going to be able to pass the, the test. If they're not, then it's no use forwarding it on to y'all because they can't even pass the, the inspections test. If they do, then they have met all the minimal criteria and then it comes to y'all.
So the applicant would have the opportunity to say, from a cost perspective, these are things I do or do not want to do before we go forward.
Before it comes to y'all. And they waste their time or money.
Y'all have discussed this with the fire marshal's office?
Yes, that's where the conversations began.
Good point, dude.
I mean, because it is a, technically a commercial property, even though it's staying residential. Hotels are a commercial property, but in a fire situation, they're considered residential. Protect. So, okay, cool.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
All right. So remove the reference to a license required, I think we've covered that one. So rewording the expiration and renewal text.
Yes.
To have them all renew at the same time.
Yes.
When, when do you propose we change? What day are we going to use?
January 31st.
January 31st.
So we're thinking January meeting. You guys will have them all. Well, well, I don't want to say all.
So I think the way we structured it is they'll renew January 31st, but it's an automatic renewal unless there's some basis for revocation, which that's another change later on that we made.
Yeah.
Where revocations would come to y'all for review, but we're not getting this influx of renewals that, you know, really have no problems. I mean, they've been operating, they've been doing good, so.
Is there a, is there a fee associated with the, the renewal process?
There should be and the city council sets the fee structures, so we would have to propose something to council for that fee.
Okay.
The reason putting it all together is really, that's how we do health, like our inspections for health.
Yeah.
And trying to keep up with 40 million different ones and who's coming to when, it's easier to do them all at once and have a time period for which Charlie and them can go back in and do their inspections yearly, those kind of things. So we'll make it easier.
Okay.
So is that, let's say I get it approved in December.
Right.
You're back in January.
That, that was.
Yep.
They would have to, they'd have to know that upfront, so you're, if you want to get approved then, that's just the way the time.
Yeah, and there's another aspect to this that we haven't covered yet, but it's, it's like the approval process and how many and when and.
I mean, I like the idea of doing it one time a year.
Streamline it.
I'm just curious about how that works.
Yep.
Is that written in this proposed amendment?
It is number two, or A two, on the first page.
And, and the idea is that you guys would see the new requests, staff could work through the renewal request unless there's issues that we've identified that we spelled out in the ordinance, hey, they've had this specific issue. We're going to bring that back to you guys to make, help us make that decision.
Yep.
Okay, so let's say a property, like how are the existing properties going to be notified of this? Is it just by a mailer or?
So what we have suggested is we have this discussion with you guys and get some direction. And if you guys are happy with what we have or what were the changes we are going to make, we're going to bring this to council in December and get some direction for, from them as a discussion. And then we will have a joint planning commission and council meeting to discuss and vote on this. And so that means the public will be notified through newspaper notifications.
Okay, so then technically this renewal process would be January 31st of 2025?
Correct.
Okay. And then what if a property owner didn't receive the notice, didn't get a, something in the mail, doesn't realize that, that's when they need to renew and are operating illegally essentially because they didn't get the notice because of.
I, I would like.
Issues with notifications to the public.
So part of the, we're going to have the joint council and planning commission meeting, but we're also all currently existing short-term rentals, we're going to have to send individualized notices of these changes to them.
Right, but not going to lie, there's a lot of people that don't check their mail or don't read it. So let's say they missed it, so then what happens to those people is my question?
If they miss the notice that we're required by statute to provide, then I mean, I.
So you shut them down for a year until the next renewal?
Potentially, yeah.
Just so I'm clear, okay.
Potentially.
Okay.
Not for a year.
No, they'd be able to start it.
They may have to reapply.
Yeah, they'd have to start the process over.
And, and the other clarification I want to make is if we have this January 31st renewal, it becomes an annual process. Which I like.
Right, and we like in health, we'll send out reminders, but at the end of the day, it's their responsibility to.
Yeah.
Do that.
Well, I like the idea, when you know you're going to renew, I mean, it's easy to keep track of it.
Yes.
If I know or it's you, you know?
You know the date.
Yeah. Well, we've had several that have missed and not done it on time and I think that having a specific date is going to stay in their heads.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Have you considered a soft compliance on, on January 31st? It's kind of, if you shut them down or they have to redo it, but I think there's going to be error on both our side and their side.
Especially in the beginning of this.
In the beginning, so have you looked at maybe for the first, you know, this is the date, but you know, we're going to go nine months out or six months out?
Or maybe they.
Kind of a soft or fluid.
Yes, I mean, our code compliance office helps us with our enforcement and they have a process for every code compliance. And there is, you know, there's some 10-day stuff that they do and some 30-day stuff that they can do. And so there is some of that grace, if you will, trying to help these folks understand what they really need to do. Now, if you have somebody that just refuses or continues to operate illegally, then that's another path that we would take.
But there will be misses as.
There will be.
As, as we've outlined and there will be issues.
There will be.
But a soft timeframe would help, I think both staff and them. I mean, you may be understaffed and not be able to handle the load from that timeframe or other things could come in. But I, I would like to see the first year anyway.
Okay.
A soft.
And it is on us, the city, to help educate our community. This is our process, this is how we do it. Have some information on our website that's actually clear and concise and, and move folks forward to the right process.
So sort of going down that same track, can we kind of get into the thought process on revocation and what that looks like?
Yes, that is page three. So.
Go around on a slew. Sorry.
So we've kind of come up with a, a list of items of reasons that we could revoke their conditional use or at the very least, we could bring it forward to you guys. So one of them is the citations and criminal complaints, the, the severity and the number of them and the complaints by the neighbors. And we also defined a minor complaint.
Just a clarification on these, so sometimes, you know, police go out and, and they make contact, but they resolve it. There's, you know, no incident report, there's no citation. And so we would think a minor complaint would be something like that where there is a call for service made, but you know, nothing happened. But then there's also the ones where there is an incident report, citation, goes to municipal court. And so we think those are all things worth considering, but at the same time, on minor complaints, you know, we have this a lot with doc, barking dog cases where neighbor, you know, calls every day saying there's a barking dog. We send code enforcement out there and no dog barking. So, you know, we ask them to make a log and have some kind of written evidence. So we don't want to set up a situation where it's like, you know, bad blood between neighbors and it's a harassment kind of deal. So we'd like to see some sort of written evidence, either through a calls for service report. Maybe code enforcement went out and, you know, gave a notice of violation, but they corrected it and so no citation was issued. Something like that.
The other thing that I'm going to suggest to everyone that watches this, this meeting, that's concerned about short-term rentals, everyone. that's concerned about short-term rentals, everyone has a cell phone in their pocket, on them somewhere, somehow. There's nothing more powerful than this device when it comes to documenting an issue. So turn on the video and start recording whatever the problem is, that documents the problem. Just calling and saying, there was an issue on Thursday and it's Sunday, that, it's hard for, again, to your point, there's got to be evidence, there's got to be some credible information that becomes the basis of the complaint. And I'm not saying that there's, that there are complaints, there are a large number of complaints, because there aren't. From my experience up here, we, most of these short-term rentals, with very limited exception, have been very easy for us to approve with no complaints. But I also know that there's another side within our community that feels like the process of notifying is not adequate and documenting is not adequate, and what are we, what are we really supposed to do about this, this house next door that's, that's causing us a lot of trouble? And so to those folks, my number one suggestion would be your cell phone. Document it with your cell phone.
Yeah, and I always remind people when documenting too, there's a little handy thing called a calendar on your phone too. So, I mean, because it is, sometimes it's hard when people say, well, this has happened, this keeps happening. Okay, well, tell us when, so every time it happens or if you call or whatever, you know, pop it on your calendar at the date that you called.
Make a note.
And that way you can convey bam bam bam, but, and again, I think a lot of this goes back to the education that we've discussed, once this gets approved and conveying to the public to, this is how you handle those problems, you know, call code enforcement, call the police, whatever that may be, which seems like you would do anyway, but maybe you don't, so, yeah, I agree.
And we also realize from a staff perspective, there's really two issues here. There's those that comply, come get a conditional use and now will be a permit at some point.
Yes.
And do they have violations?
Yes.
And then those that just choose not to come through the process at all. That's a whole nother section of, all right, we need to be maybe a little more aggressive on those because they're not going through the process, where some of our citizens are saying, I'm going to come through the process, I can't control every one of my clients that comes through here, but let's, let me work through that.
Yeah, and, and I've said this in the past, I'm going to say it again right now. To me, the, the compliance really serves multiple purposes. Number one, we're allowing folks from outside of our community to come in and stay in structures. There's a, there's a life safety component that I think is paramount to, to just being good stewards of, of our, of our community and having building inspection folks go through and make sure that we have life safety systems that are functioning properly and do those compliance checks on a regular basis. The other is really the, the, the compliance side of, of making it fair for everybody. And I, I don't see a way to really enforce this without assessing penalties for those that don't. There's revenue with the hotel occupancy tax that's collected on these. It's, you know, they're, they're sidestepping a requirement to operate their business. They're not operating legally if, if they're not paying their hotel occupancy tax. And I think that they should, they should be required to, and the city should hopefully have the means to enforce it on all these folks, and if they're not going to comply and try to operate illegally, then I hope that, that the city has the full force of, of penalties that can really crack down and shut it down because it's important.
So speaking on that, a few months back, we were trying to get a lot of illegally operating Airbnbs into compliance. Do we have a status update on how many are still operating illegally, or like what has been the solution to anyone that didn't come forward that was in operation?
We can get a report back for you in December. I don't know that we've looked completely at where that stands, so I don't want to give you a false number right now, but we can get your report back and work with our finance department. I know they've been working on collecting certain things, we've been working on all these CUs that have been coming to you, so let us get your report back in December.
Perfect.
And I worked on collecting the hotel taxes that were delinquent, and the vast majority of them were actual hotels. I think there were a few SDRs, but all of those ended up getting resolved. I want to say it was maybe two or three.
Okay.
And that's not including illegally operating, those were just registered ones, so I know we have.
There's some pretty substantial penalties for that, is there not?
Yeah, depending on like how far they get behind, I think it draws interest at like seven percent at first and then up to like 14%. And then there's also like a separate penalty of like.
Those are state mandated.
Yeah, it's by the state. I may be giving you the wrong numbers, it's in that vicinity though, there's a penalty and the interest provision.
Okay.
So I also want to say that I know numerous of us, numerous of us have taken some trainings on this, I know Candy, Brittany and Michelle participated in, in some.
Yes.
And a lot of cities have gone to, you know, a minimum of two violations in a 12-month period, or, you know, they have to submit at least nine months' worth of hotel taxes, proof of that, otherwise it gets revoked. So a lot of them have, have turned to some kind of revoking if they don't pay their hotel taxes. And, and we do have that as number three.
On that same line, Ray, in this proposal, it doesn't really, or at least I didn't see where it speaks to these violations, if there, is this like, is it one, I mean, is it just kind of subjective or?
So what's the penalty?
So we could do that, like Ray's talking about. I mean, some of them had it, you know, if you have two or more minor violations, then that meant a certain thing, and then if you had a major violation, that could be a suspension of like 90 days. I mean, we can go that route if you want, we left it fairly discretionary and just said, y'all can, you may consider this criteria, we thought it was important that you had some criteria to consider for revocation or suspension, but no, we didn't like outline it like that, but we could.
Yeah, this, this was part of the discussion we wanted to have and get some feedback.
And not to jump around too much, but I do have two points on item C. One, maximum of four guest rooms. There are areas of town, for instance in Paulan, that, you know, a five-bedroom home is pretty common out there, so I don't know if that needs to.
Oh wait, that says bed and breakfast establishment.
Correct. Sorry. Never mind, disregard me.
Yeah, section, section C is bed and breakfast.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification. And then I'll come back to my ZBA issue.
So let's go to, let's go to the next item, number three.
So back on page one, oh, wait a minute, we're doing number three, yeah, so back on page one. We did, so we kind of reworded it, we didn't remove it completely. Number three, A3. They still have to provide us the operator name and phone number, the, the operator still has to be local. We are going to have a website that we put that on, so it will be sent out to the, the surrounding property owners. We also did make it, they have to also post, one of the items that building inspections will have to check for when they go out is it'll have to be posted within the property itself, the operator name and phone number, so they know who to call if something happens. So we, we kind of reworded it that way.
Is there language in the violations that if the operator information is not current, then it's a penalty, it's a violation?
It is.
Perfect.
Oh, yes.
I think the property, I think the property owner should be required to maintain current operator information with the city at all times.
Oh wait, number, nope, number one up there.
So.
Yeah.
If they fail to do that, if they, if they change operators, they should be calling you guys to change the contact information for that new operator immediately.
I don't see it.
Yeah, I was going to say, wait a minute.
Yeah, I think it's still in three.
Oh, is it in three?
The very last.
Oh, yes.
We don't have that as like a revocation criteria, but, I mean.
Yeah.
We have a catch-all at the beginning of that section saying, you know, violation of state, federal, local law, and so, I mean, they would be subject to that A3 anyways.
Yeah, the last sentence of A3 is the one that says that.
I, I guess to, I don't, maybe I'm missing something here, but it does say that the operator name and phone number shall be furnished in the notice to owners. So it didn't remove the requirement.
Correct, I have that, and I wanted to say reworded.
Reworded, okay, okay. You kept using the term reworded, but I was like, it's not removed, so, okay, got it, all good.
I think, I think they did remove the requirement that they provide written notice to all the surrounding properties if it changes, which is.
Yes.
That makes sense.
Not realistic.
Thank you.
I did remove that.
I just was making sure I wasn't, I was.
Okay.
Okay.
So number four, we have reworded the 500-foot requirement, that is number B3. So we are keeping the 500 feet and it is lot to lot. We have listed how it should be measured, which is property line to property line, and we also listed that it cannot be varied by ZBA.
What constitutes the property line? Front, back, side?
Any portion.
Closest point?
Correct.
Closest to closest?
Correct.
And that's as the crow flies, not like a walking path.
Correct, correct. And we did also change it to only be in the RS zonings, to where CBD, commercial, anything like that can be within 500 feet, because downtown, you know, has, has quite a few.
So is this, in your opinion, with that change, is that going to stop the back and forth between the ZBA and us? Because we looked ridiculous on multiple cases.
Yes.
Okay.
But this shall not be varied by ZBA.
Yes. Yeah, this, this kind of puts your, puts our foot down and says no.
Right, this puts that interpretation by the director, it's pretty plain and simple that the line item could not be varied.
Okay, on the same, on the same token, if I, if there is one that is illegal and is operating, that one will not be taken into consideration and we'll deal with them separately.
Correct.
So if we come back in and we find something that's close by.
And they will lose their spot in line. I hate to say it that way, but by, I, I want to make sure the board understands, by keeping this 500 feet, property line to property line, we are essentially creating a line of, of people in wait, of if they don't, if somebody doesn't renew January 31st, they want to swoop in and be next in line, so we are kind of, they, they would lose their spot, at least for a year, hopefully the other one doesn't renew.
But I think that goes back to why that date, that January, I mean, that matters too, and frankly, if someone doesn't comply and their neighbor want, I mean, that's fair to me.
Correct, yeah. So staff did have a, a discussion, we, we have a few, like for instance, next month, there's a possibility you'll have three coming forward, that they're all within 500 feet of each other. And how does staff look at that, where in line do they go, you know, that type of issues? So this, this 500 feet being a hard and fast, it is not something that can be varied by ZBA, it is, it kind of distinguishes, well, whoever got their application in first will go forward, if they get denied, then the next person can go.
Which all makes sense. First come, first served.
Would you be setting a timeframe? Let's say that I, the three of us are applying and they, they won because they applied first.
Correct.
But nine months down the road, they're not operational, so are we going to have a timeframe that says you must be operational by X?
That's, that's one of the items of revocation.
Yeah.
It's number four. I think that's what we're trying to get there out of that. Correct.
Now, this would be starting, not existing, so if, if you and I are arguing and you came in first, you get it, but six months.
They, if they got it, they'd be allowed to operate.
But he doesn't, for whatever reason, he never starts.
So this, that item number four just says that they've got to provide their hotel occupancy tax reports to the city staff, and if they cease operations, they can't do it for more than two quarters.
So if they, if they submit a zero hotel occupancy tax for the first three months, that's one, not really hit, but that's kind of one, and then the second quarter, if they submit zero hotel tax again, then it's out, they're out. You can only do it two times.
We bring it back to consider revocation.
Okay, sorry, we bring it back to you guys.
We bring it here, you'll have the opportunity to revoke that one.
So let me ask a question about that though, sorry, that was really loud. If, let's say, in this example, and to Trinidad's point, would we be made aware that there's a neighbor in waiting, you know, I mean, because I do think that would matter, right?
It does matter.
For my decision, I would want to know, you know, there's three others that are in line, you know, waiting for this, and this person's never really used it, they've never, you know?
Right.
And of course, they would be notified to come to the meeting to tell us, hey, we've been struggling with somebody, you know, building, getting out and approving, or whatever that may be, but I just want to make sure we would know, like.
So, so the hotel tax reporting, they have to do that monthly? But as far as like the internal procedure, we do need to work that out because finance is the one that handles that, so they'll need to communicate with these guys and then, yeah, make you all aware.
Yeah, what this eliminates is the opportunity for me to make my house a short-term rental and never any rented.
Yeah, because you don't, yeah, because you don't want anyone else around.
Yeah, that was the purpose of, of you can only submit.
Yeah, y'all addressed it well.
A zero. And, and so that gives them six months, if you do two, three, three months.
And so Ms. Miller, that would be, so if they applied at this, came to us the same day, those three applicants, Trinidad was first in line.
Right.
So you may have two others that may have to wait the full year, but we have to just have that on record that, hey, there were others that came, we know the timeline's coming up, we may give them a call, are you guys still interested in reapplying?
Cool, that's, I like that idea.
Yeah.
I really like that, yeah.
What's the next item on your list, Ray?
Oh wait, I've got a question though.
Go ahead.
What is our turnaround time? Because there, a couple months back, as I brought up in past meetings, there was some, oops, it didn't end up on the COSA GIS map, and there were some very, very upset applicants applying for short-term rentals that had done all of the due diligence, and I don't know if those are the ones that are coming up in December, but very well could be.
We, we, we send those as soon as they get approved here.
Okay.
We send the GIS memos to our GIS team. And then each week, we've identified a staff on planning that is going to check the GIS maps to make sure they're going.
So that is a designated task now, because it went like a couple months without, okay.
We, we feel like we have a better handle on that, the proof is in the, the maps, do we, do we really have a handle on that? So we're continuing to keep that process going.
Well, but they were calling the city and they were.
Yeah, I, I want to. This is another point of clarity I want to make, if someone's buying a house solely to make it a short-term rental, it'd be really smart for you to come through this process, make it a condition of the purchase to get the permit for, or whatever the, the conditional use to allow it.
The, the other item I want to remind you guys is we will have a website with the operator name and phone number and it'll have an address, so that will also be kept up to date along with the map.
Okay, thank you.
All right, what's your next item, Ray?
So we also added, we clarified, because if you remember last month, I added 500 feet from a school, so we clarified that a little bit more to say the fenced area of a school, if they don't have a fence, then the closest building. So an STR cannot be within 500 feet of a fenced area of a school or the closest building if there is no fence.
And where is that?
Um, that is number, that is B, no, that is B4.
Bingo.
Page one.
Yes, page one, B4.
Bottom of page one.
So I had added it last month, but I didn't clarify whether or not if it's fenced or, yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and I was going to say ASU had something similar with that, because, anyway, long story short, but that makes it much more clear in terms of.
So what do we do if someone, what do, what do we do if the school district expands the fenced area and someone that was compliant becomes in violation?
Their grandfather didn't.
Can we revoke?
Yeah, I mean, I think they would have a vested right as of when they were approved, so a subsequent change, I don't think.
Great.
The other thing I want to clarify is last month, I only. The, the other thing I want to clarify is, um, last month, I only had the, it was a, a school, this time I clarified a public school. Just to throw that out there.
Okay, so...
So I did say a public school.
So TLC, all of those, grade beginnings, none of those...
TLCA is now considered a public school.
Is it? Okay.
So that one would be included, but like, um, Premier, I think is charter, Cornerstone is charter.
Grade beginnings, all of that, okay.
What's your definition of a building? I mean, if they're doing maintenance, if it's a maintenance building or if it's...
Or like one of those pods?
Yeah, I mean, like on Bell Street, on Bell Street, it's not a school.
We had defined it as, um, a used building, so if it is like a shed that just holds lawn mowers, it wouldn't count it as a used school building that kids go into.
Okay, so like the area on Bell Street, I don't know what that's called, where they have all their buses and...
Bus barn.
Bus barn.
Is that called, or...
Yeah, yeah, that's not where students are.
So would it, would it help to set that up as what a public school is, where, where school, where kids go versus...
Yeah, we do have in our zoning ordinance already a definition of a building, and I'll just read it to you real quick. "Any structure built for the support, shelter, or enclosure of persons, animals, goods, or movable property of any kind, and any roof-covered structure shall be considered a building." And so we probably need to, if y'all want a different definition than just building, we need to probably think about that, and of course, this being our discussion, which is great, we're going to bring this back again for discussion next month, so let's be thinking about that word. What does that mean when it comes to these schools?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the intent, is that, is that where their children are attending classes.
Totally agree, totally agree.
Yeah, clarification that the building is used or user occupied, I don't know if that's...
We could just add on to that first sentence, so it's closest building of public school where, where children are, whatever the term is, so I think we get the intent.
Does this ordinance apply only to residential, or does it apply to commercial as well?
Um, we have it stated that it is the three RS-zoned areas.
Okay, so just single-family residential zoning?
So the public school, though, is...
So if someone has a...
The junior high campus of Central.
Right. So if someone has a commercial lot?
I believe, and I'm going to let Brandon speak to this, but I believe Section B means all short-term rentals, not just ones in RS1, RS2, and RS3. So, Brandon, is that accurate?
Yeah, so for this public school part, it's, you know, any zoning district, and then for the 500 feet between each other, that's RS1, RS2, and RS3.
Right.
So they wouldn't have to meet the 500-foot in commercial or, I think, RM, right?
Correct.
Great. Thank you for that clarification.
And then just clarifying by public school, we're not, we're not incorporating ASU or any, I mean, or, does that include? I mean, they are a public school, but I'm not, in my head, I'm not...
Maybe we should use public secondary school and elementary, elementary and secondary?
I, I guess, and I'm thinking that more from people who are applying, not...
Yeah, I think public school means something specifically, like, at least on, I think you were maybe thinking of like the alcohol licensing?
Yes, yeah.
So, yeah, I probably need to look at that and...
Just clarify, for the purposes of, I don't, I would hate for someone not to apply, because it would, in theory, be good to have short-term rentals near ASU, and so I would hate for someone to see that and say, well, they're a public, they're a state school, you know what I mean? Um, so it might be helpful to have a small clarification on, does that mean K through 12? Does that mean, you know, um, yeah, yeah, it's just something... Right. Well, I think those are, I think Cornerstone is considered public.
Is it public?
Yeah, I'm not sure, but...
Okay.
I, I don't know, why wouldn't we include private? Why isn't it public and private?
I would say, well... I would also...
What about daycares?
I, I, well...
What about daycares? Do they count?
It's getting very difficult to...
Yes.
Yeah, I just think from a staff perspective, that's going to get really difficult to ramrod where daycare's opening. Public schools are pretty consistent on, you know, their locations and so forth, but...
Well, and also too, I think the idea, if, like, to not get too crazy here, but the idea is, public schools, children have a lot of, they're, they're out there, does that make sense? They're, they have recess, they have whatever, where you're going to daycare, a parent is, I mean, they're a little more closed in, but also, there's lots of daycares in homes, there's, I mean, that's hard.
Why was I asking?
Yeah, and then I would say the same thing about private schools, especially with, and I don't know what the legislature has done on this, so forgive me, but vouchers and whatnot, there's liable to be a lot of opportunities for schools like Premier or somewhere else where we're kind of throwing the baby out with the bathwater kind of situation, like, we're thinking more of kids that are at recess or accessible versus someone that's in a school, an alternative-type school.
Right.
Okay.
And I'm, I am definitely not using all the right terms and whatnot, so you get what I'm saying, sorry.
Okay.
Go to the next one.
Okay, so we added and clarified, um, the requirements for the appeals, which is page two, D1. So normally, they would have 30 days to appeal, and, um, that was kind of strenuous on staff as far as the next ones coming up, that, you know, wanted to be able to, to move in within 500 feet of that area, um, had to wait 30 days to see if this person appealed, uh, so we, we lowered it to 15 days. We also, um, let's see, we also... Uh, we did add that it could be, we clarified that it could be the applicant or any citizen. Uh, the, the original ordinance did not clarify, it just said a citizen, so we were clarifying that a little bit more, that it could be any citizen, didn't even have to be in the same neighborhood, street, in the notification area. Any questions on that?
No.
Okay, so this is back to where we jumped before, we are taking away the requirement of a change of occupancy and replacing it with the required inspection checklist. And it will be done before the conditional use comes to you guys.
Great.
And I think the last one is that, um, we, uh, we removed the outdoor gatherings, the 30-foot of pavement, those ones that the other court cases have, have lost.
Right. Okay.
Really good work, guys.
Yeah, I, I think we're headed in the right direction with this ordinance.
So the next question for you guys is, are you good with us making these few changes and then having the discussion with city council next month? Or would you us, prefer us to make these changes and come back to you guys again next month for a discussion? So, so far, I have to, um, add a buffer for the first year, and to also kind of, I added, reword the 500-foot property line to property line to say closest property line to closest property line, um, and then the elementary or secondary school, and to clarify the building is occupied. And/or, you know, where the kids go.
And Ray, I think as far as timing, we're probably going to have the discussion at city council on that December 19th, and so we actually have planning commission on December 18th, I believe.
Okay, so we could bring it back.
So there probably is a chance, we wouldn't get a lot of, any changes that we had to make on the 18th, probably wouldn't, would have to be verbally done with city council on the 19th, as there are packets due before that.
So...
Discussion with city council, just to go over this as well?
Correct.
Correct, to get any direction from them, so when we actually, because the new law's under notification for doing this, we would have to send notifications to basically anyone in RS1, RS2, and RS3, and we physically and monetarily probably cannot do that, uh, and so to have a joint session, it will be a joint session sometime in January, uh, to bring it forward and go through planning commission and city council at the same time. Once we finish the updates, we could send those to Travis and Luke to see if they say it looks like we hit all the points before we then send that to council. And if they're okay, then we'll send it on to council and then schedule this joint meeting.
You guys feel like we're headed in the right direction overall?
Absolutely.
I agree. I think you guys have done a great job, thank y'all.
I think the only thing, sorry to maybe backtrack a little bit, um, is Luke brought up earlier, you know, and, and maybe this is not something that we look at now, but as we, you know, start looking more at revoking versus approving, you know, needing those hard and fast, two, two times you're out, or, you know, but I, I, I tend to lean on the side of, I like the case-by-case things, but I also understand from a fairness perspective, within a year, depending on how many revocations you get, it may be, you know, we may need those guidelines. So that would be the only thing that I think we didn't really discuss, that just to consider before we check mark.
Hey, I think I have a conjunction with that, too, is what the penalty, you know, some outline of what the penalties look like to...
So as far as penalties, like, say, um, they don't pay hotel taxes, so our tax provisions already provide penalties under there, I think same, like if they got a noise violation and they had to go to municipal court and pay a fine, they already have penalties there. I think the penalty here is the suspension or revocation of their conditional use, so...
That makes sense.
And I, I, I'm, I'm, I would side with case-by-case personally. If, if, if it's egregious, I think we're all going to probably look at it and say, we probably need to pull this one, uh, but there could be circumstances where there's a violation, but there's special circumstances around that violation that might, might not, uh, force us to consider it at the same weight and consideration of, of other violations.
Yeah, to, to talk a little bit more on that, and one of the trainings, um, that is one of the issues another city had, was they had put, you know, you could only have two violations, well, the person had two violations, but it was over like a 13-month period or something like that, so to, to see that there's that big of a difference between violations, you know, made a difference, but because their rule said you could only have two violations, you're out, so...
And that's where I lean towards the case-by-case.
It is.
And I think that's where Brandon put in there, may consider.
Yeah.
And so you have that discretion, it is a conditional use, and so we, we just have to provide you with all the information and the facts, as well as the operator needs to do that as well, and so you can make a good decision for the community.
And I think my, my, and this is just my background, so forgive me, but I think my concern more lies with, I just want to make sure that there's a record of what we revoke and how we handle things, so that when we're presented with the same exact facts, we're considerate of how we decided the last time, because what I don't want it to look like is, because this is in one neighborhood and this is in another neighborhood, we're deciding differently, so I'm, I'm looking more from like an equitable response, uh, fair and equitable versus, you know, because I just think it's easy sometimes when you, we're human, right? We get bogged down and there's five revocations on one list and one on the other, and it may just be a day, you know, timing, whatever it is, but I just would like to make sure that we're keeping a good record of how we decide things and why, to ensure that our decisions are fair and equitable regardless of where it's at, when it is, that kind of...
And also, except for the hotel tax, these other items, we will really only happen when they come to renew, so...
Right, exactly.
Yeah. Well, we've had several of those already, where case-by-case we had to say no, not at this time, or yes, but it was case-by-case, but I do think we, we need a record and keep up with where we've been, what we've said, so that everything is done equally.
Yes, yeah, and that, that's my only thought with that is...
I think that the route of edit, it'll streamline the process a lot, and we'll have that, they'll have that going to people.
Yes, no doubt.
Because...
Yeah, like the one day...
Turnover and...
Right. When it just makes it easy.
With that process being streamlined, it'll, it'll help a lot.
There's still a process in place where a, a citizen could file a, a complaint or object to a short-term rental, is that correct?
Yes, they can.
And that maybe would come up at this January 31st deadline, so if someone's really upset about the short-term rental down the street, they could say, they could file an objection, and it would come before us.
Yep.
Okay.
Is there any mention of those that are not in compliance? I mean, you're, you're going to have a document, so you're going to have a paragraph, anyone that is operating without the appropriate documentation will be, and then just so that, if I get a hold of this document, I say, well, how are they going to catch me other than you're looking for? Is there anything in here that just flat-out says, we're going to shut you down immediately?
Well, I think we do that through the hotel tax provisions, and, and we are actively doing that right now. We've got one, and, and this isn't an STR, this is a motel, but, I mean, we filed a lawsuit to do like a temporary injunction until they get, um, paid up for that, so if we find out about them, I mean, I don't know how we find about, out about all unregistered ones, but when we get it, I mean, we certainly investigate that, and that's the route we go.
Will there be anything in writing on the short-term rental that would say what you just said? You know, we will pursue the appropriate action if anyone is, just, it's just a reminder more than anything else.
I mean, not in this ordinance, no.
You read it and says, well, I don't want to do it.
But it's the tax code, yeah. I mean, in the tax code, it's state and our local ordinance that provides that, so...
But when they get their, their tax bill, just like your county appraisal bill, it says, like, we will pursue immediate remedies or...
You know, there is something we haven't discussed that I'd like to mention to you guys, and it, it goes to Brandon's point about identifying, uh, properties that are operating illegally. Uh, I believe that there is a provision, or that the city can require, that people that register on websites like Airbnb and, and other short-term rental sites, uh, to provide evidence that they are allowed to operate within the, the, the community that their property is located within, and I think that would shut down a, an overwhelming majority of the illegal, um, short-term rental operators in this market. Would you guys, can you look into that for us?
Yes, I know, um...
You would notify, you would notify Airbnb and say, San Angelo now has a requirement for a conditional use in order to operate within our community, and then if they allow someone to come in and operate that hasn't provided the, the evidence, then they're in violation, and the city could maybe pursue Airbnb for, for allowing someone to, to market on their website, uh, without the proper approvals.
Yes, yeah, um, a few of us, the training that we did, um, other cities have started contacting those websites and saying that, and, and they've gotten a great response, and the Airbnb will work with them.
Yeah.
So, yeah, the, the city has it down to, to try that also.
I think that'll put a, a big slowdown, it's not going to stop it, but...
But it helps.
And to Trinidad's and Brandon's point, is when we get a complaint otherwise, maybe not through the taxes, through the hotel tax, but if we get a complaint through code compliance, that they really share that information with the rest of the city, say, all right, which one of these is the, the highest penalty violation we could go towards and have the most evidence of?
We're going to have a chance to look at the updated status of tracking those ones that are operating illegally that we've been able to identify.
Yes, I'll bring that forward in December.
Awesome.
Perfect.
Great work, guys.
Yeah. Thanks, Ray.
Yes.
All right, public comment. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda maybe raised by the public at this time? I'm going to open public comment. Anyone wish to come up and speak? All right, I'm going to close public comment. Next item is the director's report. We have a discussion item, potential expansion of the open structure overlay to include approximately 200 homes located along Catalina, Cordell, Luis, Eunice, Urine, Urine, Nuasis, and north of Edmund.
I think it's Earlene is what I figured out, but yes, it doesn't say Earlene to me.
No, it does not.
Well, good morning again, Aaron Vanoye, Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. So this is just a small inset map, and I've got, got this again, but this is an area that's kind of bordered by Kirby Community Park, OC Fisher in the back, uh, and the soccer complex area in the dam, really, it's the dam area from OC Fisher, District 2, Tom Thompson, Angelo Heights neighborhood. Right now, we've identified 14 open structures, those are primarily carports. We always think about these are only carports, but it's open structures too, whether that's like maybe a front awning, uh, for your front porch that's, comes out in front of the 25-foot setback. So here is the larger map, that purple area is our current open structures overlay zone. The reason why we're looking... The reason why we're looking at this is there were two, uh, carports in that area with the purple pin up there that were identified, that were built without a permit and did not meet the setbacks. They came forward with ZBA cases. ZBA has asked us to bring a case forward to planning commission to evaluate if we should extend that area. We have not done a full case evaluation. We're just trying to test the waters to see if this is something we should or should not do as city staff time is critical and we just wanna focus on areas we should and, and should not focus on. So again, here's that inset that's a little closer. You can see those are structures that are existing. You can see that the purple goes just across Edmund, about three houses deep. There's a number of structures on Edmund itself. If you drive down that road and you'll see there's a number of carports. Some of them conform to our open structure ordinance, some of them don't. Most of the ones that we see with the red pins back here do not conform, um, in some way or, or another. The open structure, uh, overlay components, these are just kind of summarized, these are not word for word. These are just kind of summarized what we kind of look at. And so the biggest reason for an open structure overlay is to allow open carport structures within five foot of the front property line. So you have a driveway, may go to a garage, may not go to a garage, but you're able to put a carport over that and come within five feet of that front property line. One of the rules that we have in there is that it should be the relative same pitch as the home roof. Sometimes we have interpreted that as it must meet the exact pitch, but I think we are looking for relative pitch. We, part of it is, does, do you have a gable roof and a flat carport roof? Does that really make sense there? We also have the same, uh, should be the same materials and colors of the home roof. A lot of folks interpret that as it, well, if you got shingles, you must have shingles. We've actually allowed some, are the colors matching? Does it, is it gonna look different if you have a metal roof, but you've got a gable? There's some, some things there. The history that, and Sherry Bailey may help me chime in here as well. She did a lot of the research as well as me looking back, is that the open structure overlay created in 2005 was really for some of our older neighborhoods that either had very small garages, no garages, or maybe just a single garage and wanted to have, to allow families to protect their vehicles. And in 2005, city council and planning commission agreed that, yes, we should do that. And Sherry, you have anything to add to that?
No, it was basically that, there was just some discussion I found recently about what about expanding it in the future? And there really was a general feeling, at least at that time, that it was specifically for the older areas of town. That newer homes being built should accommodate the change in automobile type, the change in, in home type or home use. And homes have gotten bigger than they were. These were the, the smaller homes in the older section. And so we really haven't in the past, since this occurred, looked at expanding it very much.
So again, I go back to the map that kind of shows that area, goes all the way up to 50th through Lakeview area. It doesn't really go out into the, what we would call the ranch and estates or the larger single-family lots. It does kind of encompass around over by the base, those areas, as well as what we would call Angelo Heights and Central Neighborhood. It doesn't really come into, um, Santa Rita very much, and of course, Southland and that area, all the way down to the lake. So I did put just a couple of examples on my slide. So here are two houses. Both of those are probably with, right at five feet from the property line. You can see their structure, just metal pipes, uh, metal roof, uh, flat roofs. So these are in that area. If we were to extend the open structure, these may or may not comply with what our current open structure rules are, and so they may still need to go to ZBA. Here's one that's much closer that we would say, looks like they did it correctly. It matches the, the pitch of the roof. It's well back from five feet, uh, so that one probably matches. And so interpreting our ordinance, we're looking for something more like that rather than this, but that's gonna be part of the discussion of, do we expand it to this small area? Most of those will probably still not conform with just an expansion. They may still have to have a ZBA case to resolve their issues, their full issues. So.
So is that your question to us?
Let me get to my question for you.
Do we include these houses or not?
So I really just have kind of three questions of where do, where do you want city staff to go? I mean, do we consider those things, or do we just go back to those property owners and say, okay, you need to come forward and have some resolution?
My concern in some of those neighborhoods is income. I mean, like, they're, they're in a, a lower income classification typically. And like, if we are asking them to modify an existing structure or tear down, and then we start finding them, like, they don't have the money to do that.
Correct. And that's our challenge now, is they are in violation now, so the city has to act. Notice them, let them know they're in violation.
And if we grandfather them and then put this, uh, open structure overlay in that area, then we haven't accomplished anything.
It's only a few blocks.
Yeah, and that, that's our struggle is.
It's really two separate discussions in my mind. One is whether we include this neighborhood or not. And when you look at the larger area that this overlay encompasses, it seems ridiculous to not include these houses. So that, that, that's one. Two is the broader discussion of the, the open structure ordinance and whether we wanna consider changes to it or not, and I'm.
I, I think we should include that, uh, area, in my opinion.
Yeah.
At, for the overlay.
And to answer part of Candy's question is, the overlay would have given them the carport. It may not give them the design of their current carport.
Right.
And then that's for ZBA to decide.
But they're a step closer.
Is, is their design that they currently have, do they need to modify it or not? And that would be a ZBA question.
Because I, I think those houses in that area are similar to the ones right across.
They're no different, they're no different than anything that's on Edmund.
Those were built in like 70s and 80s. Across is gonna be more like 50s, 60s in the 70s, but still.
Leaving a garage in the 70s.
Yeah.
For a truck.
Right.
Yeah. Say if these were built in the late 70s, 80s.
Well, you've also got, you've also got these older neighborhoods where garages have been converted into bedrooms.
Right.
And they're trying to get.
That one picture had that.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I'm just saying that.
It's a, it's a big area. So do we need to make a motion to include?
No, I'm not asking for any official action, just if, if everybody's kind of in agreeance of, yes, we'd like to see something back, whether we bring that back in December or January. It may be January that we bring it back, depending on some of the other things we have going on, but we can bring back. Cause part of it is, we need to notice that area. We will hear back from those citizens if they think that's a good idea or not, uh, to expand that open structure overlay in that area.
What would be the jurisdiction, let's say I bought, I bought that house that's illegal and I bought it the way it is.
Bought the problems with it.
I bought the problem, would you?
That is one of our biggest challenges is we, usually if they came back in for a permit, it might be addressed at that time, saying, hey.
And the other thing is, the ZBA, when they consider the cases, are supposed to look for hardship. Financial is not a hardship.
Doesn't count.
So they have to find, there's some unique circumstance that causes this to have to be this way. So yes, they could make them tear it down. Well, tearing down four metal poles and, you know, it's not a huge, it's usually they're not attached to the house.
Right.
So yes, that could be a, a, a side effect. But ZBA would then have to decide whether or not they wanted to do it or not, and what criteria they could legally permit it under.
Yeah, we'd have to be careful, because I do believe if I bought the house from you and then I would go then go back after you because for. Yeah, for you, yet, for not.
No, no.
Not necessarily.
A lot of the time, those surveys are reused. And you've got like a T-47 that people are signing off on modifications. The seller's disclosure over the years has been modified considerably in order to.
I understand, like, most of those are within five foot, so that's within the.
So you got a survey.
But again, like, the title company's not going to the property to assess. And you're basing it off of, well, and they're going back on years.
No, to clarify, it should be in a survey. That carport should be on a survey.
As long as.
But whether it's legal or not is not the requirement of the survey.
If it's within the, uh, I mean.
It will.
I also wanna remind the board that if, if we do, um, extend the overlay, they may have to tear it down because they're within three feet of the property line rather than five foot, but they can, that would give them the opportunity to put it back up at five foot. A lot of them.
Tear it down.
Yeah, so, so they may have to tear it down, or they may just have to take a foot or two off of it.
Yeah, you wouldn't disclose, like, in any, the title company wouldn't, wouldn't know that that, this isn't covered. Does that make sense? Like, you would know that the, the carport is there, but.
That's something that's covered when you buy an house.
Correct. It should come up.
But the title company also checks on building permits. And those up there have not gotten building permits.
No.
No, there's no way they can.
There's no way they can.
Okay.
I was gonna say.
When we bought our home, it was listed.
It'd be great if they did, but they don't.
Do you want us to extend this or?
Yeah.
Yeah, are we looking at just this area?
I would, I would expand into this area, that's my, my personal, I don't, I'll let everyone else voice their opinions.
I agree.
I agree.
We'll bring some data back and some recommendations and bring a full case back for you guys to hear in the future.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds great.
Great work, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, follow-up and administrative issues? Announcements? Consideration of future agenda items? Anyone have anything they'd like to add? All right, adjournment. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
I'd like to compliment the air situation.